Okay, we will begin. I would like to welcome everybody to the February 3rd, 2016 Planning Board Meeting of the Town of Smithtown. At this time, I'd ask that you all please rise and join us in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Our Chair recognizes Planner Matthew Colado for reading the items recommended for adjournment.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Board. The Planning Department would like to recommend the following items for adjournment because the applicants are not ready to be heard. Under zoning petitions, number 1, 2012-04 Storeville-Comes-Nesconsett; number 2, 2012-02 Carlson Associates-Kings Park; number 3, 2015-05 Thomas Giswali-Kings Park; under waiver requests, number 4, 773 Scholar States Comac; number 5, 1135 Toomey Platt-St. James; under final subdivisions, number 6, 1156 Map of Open Meadow-Fort Solongo; under preliminary subdivision, number 7, 1169 Map of Core Land Division-Kings Park; under closed hearings, number 8, 2010-06 KVC Holdings; number 9, 911A Glen Hill Northern-St. James.
Okay. Is there anyone present here this evening who wishes to be heard on any of these matters recommended for adjournment? There being none, the Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn these items, including item number 7, which is adjourned to a date certain requested by the applicant to March 3rd, 2016. Do I have a motion?
I think it says March 2nd on the agenda.
March, okay, I see, corrected.
I move that we adjourn the items read, including item number 7, to March, all the items read, but specifically, item 7 will be adjourned to March 2nd, 2016.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The items are adjourned. The next item is a final subdivision, item number 10, 1157 Map of Core-Kings Park.
This application was heard at the September 2nd, 2015 Planning Board Meeting. The Planning Department recommended that it be denied based on several reasons, and still holds that recommendation, but the Board approved it. However, the Board's approval was noncompliance with SEACRA because the Board did not issue a SEACRA Negative Declaration prior to approval. Also, Planning Boards lack authority to approve Platts noncompliance with the zoning ordinance unless variances are approved by separate resolution. This plat is noncompliance with the zoning and no separate resolution was adopted. In addition, no resolution regarding performance bond was adopted. Also, the Board's approval did not include any standard or special conditions of approval for matters such as park fees, street trees, et cetera. After the decision, the Planning Department recommended that the Board rescind the resolution and adopt all of the appropriate resolutions. The Board then requested the Planning Department to prepare the resolutions. The Department prepared them for the December 2nd, 2015 meeting, but the matter was adjourned because the Board members wanted to vote when all members were present. The resolutions are presented below.
Okay. Is anyone present who wishes to be heard?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board. My name is Vincent Tramarko. I represent the applicant. There is no need for an affidavit of posting as the application had been adjourned a couple of times. Notwithstanding what the Planning Department recommends, how we correct this apparent mistake that we all made when the subdivision was approved, my suggestion, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board is, you already have a resolution granting the subdivision. So the only other resolutions that you need are the SEACRA Negative Recommendation and those recommendations having to do with the bond, performance bond, et cetera. So rather than redo the whole thing, which I believe requires unanimous vote of the Board, why don't we, I guess we would have to say, we acknowledged that there was an affirmative vote granting the subdivision, and now we are doing the SEACRA Negative Decl, sitting as the Planning Board, and also the bond resolutions. I think it's easier, it's smarter, and it's more efficient.
So you're asking us to do some type of a supplemental set of resolutions to supplement what's already been done?
That's correct. I mean, the subdivision was passed. It's a question of, you know, I guess we all didn't think of it at the time, and I don't even know if the Planning Department had the recommendations ready. I assume they did.
You mean, were the resolutions ready then? No, I don't believe there were.
Maybe there weren't. I don't know. But in any event, it would seem to be the most efficient way to correct this situation, and my client can move on.
Well, I think, whatever way we go, somebody's gonna have to read the resolutions if we're gonna vote on them. Whether it's part of what the Planning Department has here to rescind and then re-grant, or just supplement, so that hasn't been done yet, so I don't know what everybody wants to do.
There are two resolutions, I think, before us. One is the one rescinding and re-granting with the requisite accompanying resolutions. And then there's the other one back from September on page three of that date, which is the original Planning Board resolution prepared by the Planning Department. And I think that's where we stand right now. The first one, as you've mentioned, rescinds and then re-grants with the requisite similar other approvals, and then the other one, the second resolution, is a denial.
Is there a denial?
If you would like to have both of the resolutions read through, we can.
Mr. Chairman?
I don't see a denial on page three.
It's after the map.
It's after the map? Oh, it's separate?
Oh, I see. Right.
Yep.
I have a question for the attorney with respect to the affidavit of posting.
Please go ahead.
When we had spoken earlier in the week, you had said that you were going to check your files to see if you had the original affidavit of posting from when the hearing was scheduled, I think, back in December?
No, I have a letter from Agnes at the Planning Department saying we didn't have to post.
But do you have the original affidavit of posting that wasn't submitted at?
From when? From the original hearing? I guess I have a copy of it. I don't know. I'll have to look.
This brings back something that makes me recall. At the last meeting, you didn't have the affidavit, and I think your client wasn't present. Is this the application you're referring to?
I didn't have, when I said I didn't have it, it was for that meeting, but I didn't know. I didn't need it because at the first meeting, it was when we submitted the affidavit of posting, which apparently the Planning Department.
Okay, but it was, I believe it was adjourned because we did not have that.
The meeting was adjourned without, well, the December meeting, when it was originally scheduled for, no one presented at this meeting. It was adjourned without a presentation, so there was no affidavit of posting submitted to the Planning Department.
I don't remember that, Allison. We submitted the affidavit of posting at the original hearing. I don't know. I might have a copy of it or another original.
I know there was one of his, but I don't know if this was the same one. I remember that issue, that his client had it, but I don't know if it was this one or a different one. But if he submitted it, they should have it on file, I would think. Right?
Yes. I know there was one certainly that was submitted in September, which is when the, or October, which is when the Board first acted on this case. My question is whether there was one submitted for the rehearing, which was to either amend the resolutions or revise the resolutions. I'm gonna check the file right now.
So assuming you don't have one, then I would presume he's gonna have to repost, and we're gonna have to have this back on again?
Oh, wait a minute. Excuse me, I didn't mean to say, "Wait a minute," but.
Wait a minute, it's okay.
I submitted the affidavit of posting. It's not my problem that the Planning Department lost it, or misplaced it, or whatever, and now we're talking about a September affidavit that I have to find? If my client decides to show up tonight, I'll have him testify under oath that he posted it in September.
I recall adjourned something because we did not have an affidavit of posting.
That was the last meeting, Mr. Chase.
Yes.
That we didn't need it the last time.
Then why did we adjourn it?
We adjourned it because I thought we needed an affidavit of posting for that meeting, not for the September meeting. And since that time, I spoke to Agnes, and she says, "No, all you need is the initial affidavit of posting," which we, I'm saying we submitted.
We do have it.
You have it.
We do have a copy of it.
That solves that problem.
Get me all excited here for no reason, Chief.
We must make sure everything's in order.
Okay, well, it's in order. Okay.
My apologies for that.
Okay, we have before us then this resolution as well as the second resolution. What is your pleasure? Would you like to have the first resolution read, or?
Well, I think it would be good to read everything through before we vote on it. The only thing that I would point out is that the second resolution, procedurally, the second resolution just says it's denied, but it's already been granted.
That's right.
So procedurally, how could we deny something we've already granted?
Well, you know, that's the real issue, and that's why I'm saying that the better thing to do would be to grant the other resolutions that are really secondary to the grant, that are for the subdivision.
I guess, in my opinion, in my opinion alone, I don't know what everybody else thinks, I think that if there's gonna be any type of a vote on either of these resolutions, they should be read into the record so somebody can see what we're voting on.
Then let us proceed.
If there's any review of what we did.
I agree.
Somebody can look at the record and see what we voted on.
I'll read the resolutions. Be resolved that the Planning Board of the Town of Smithtown hereby rescind the following resolution that was adopted by the Board on September 2nd, 2015. Be resolved that the Planning Board hereby grants the applicant's request for final approval to subdivide .8685 acres for two single-family building lots. Be further resolved that the Planning Board of the Town of Smithtown hereby declares itself lead agency on this matter and finds that this matter is subject to the State Environmental Quality Review Act and is classified as an unlisted action pursuant to SEACRA. And be further resolved that the Planning Board of the Town of Smithtown, after due study and deliberation of the subject record, does hereby issue a SEACRA Negative Declaration. Determination of nonsignificance in EIS is not necessary in the matter of the application for subdivision approval by Robert Scalfo from Map of Core at Kings Park, number 1157, for the following reasons. A, the proposal does not appear to significantly threaten any unique or highly valuable environmental or cultural resources as identified and or regulated by the Environmental Conservation Law of the State of New York or Smithtown Town Code. B, the parcel does not appear to suffer from any severe environmental development constraints, no poor soil properties, and no high groundwater. C, the small size and nature of the proposal mitigate against any significant adverse impact upon the environment. D, the proposal appears to be consistent with the planned use of the parcel and compatible with neighboring land uses. And E, the project as proposed on the Tree Preservation and Land Clearing Plan, prepared by Craig M. Lee Hat, Licensed Professional Engineer, and dated June 26, 2015, provides the retention of a significant amount of existing trees and natural vegetation upon development of the subject parcel. Be resolved that the final plat of Map of Core at Kings Park, number 1157, is hereby approved, subject to the following conditions. A, posting of a performance bond in the form and amount specified by separate resolution of the Planning Board and for a term of two years. B, posting of a general liability insurance policy to run concurrently with the term of the performance bond and in accordance with other provisions of Section 248 of the Code of the Town of Smithtown Subdivision Regulations. C, payment of the inspection fee in cash deposits as established by separate resolution of the Planning Board. D, payment of a park fee of $7,200. E, final approval of the drainage and regressing plans to the satisfaction of the town engineer. F, prior to the time of submission of an application for a building permit for a particular lot, the subdivider shall have his engineer or surveyor submit an individual site plan of that lot, which is in substantial agreement with the intent of the approved regressing plan. Such individual site plan shall show certified existing topography and all relevant grades proposed for the street, house, and all land to be regreated on that lot. The site plan shall also show all storm pools, dry wells, retaining walls, et cetera, as bonded or as deemed additional necessary. Such site plans must be approved by the Engineering Department and returned to the Building Inspector prior to issuance of a permit for the foundation and garage slab only. G, at such time a subdivider has completed the foundation and rough grading for a particular lot, he shall have his engineer or surveyor make an as-built survey for the foundation grade, garage slab, and all grades immediately around the foundation. Such as-built foundation plan must be approved by the Engineering Department, and no framing shall commence before this approval. H, a valid certificate of occupancy shall be provided for the existing residences and accessory structures on the property. I, the final plat shall include all information required by Section 248-15 and 248-16 of the Town Subdivision Regulations, the conditions of approval, and the office of the Suffolk County Clerk. A check print of the final plat shall be submitted to the Planning Department for review before the MyLars are prepared. J, a total of four street trees shall be planted approximately 35 feet on center. The trees shall be 3 inches to 3 and 1/2 inches in caliber northern red oak, American sweetgum, sassafras, tulip tree, or white oak. Existing healthy trees may be substituted if they are protected from construction damage and are acceptable to the Planning Department. K, the minimum required side yards adjacent to the subdivision boundaries shall be 16 feet. L, all necessary dedication papers shall be submitted to the developer, to the planning, shall be submitted by the developer to the Planning Department in complete and accurate form as one package, including but not limited to the performance bond, liability insurance policy, title report, and all required fees, at least 90 days prior to the expiration date of the conditional approval. Incomplete submissions will not be accepted. If the applicant is unable to comply with the above requirement prior to the 90-day deadline, an extension of the Planning Board's approval is necessary. And be further resolved that the Chairman of the Planning Board is hereby authorized to sign the final plat, thereby approving said plat after the Town Board has posted a performance bond of satisfactory form and amount. And be further resolved that the conditional approval of said final plat shall expire 180 days after the date of this resolution and within 62 days of the Chairman of the Planning Board signs the final maps of this plat, unless said plat shall have been duly filed or recorded by the owner in the office of the Suffolk County Clerk. Be resolved that the Planning Board of the Town of Smithtown hereby modifies the Building Zone Ordinance of the Code of the Town of Smithtown for the subdivision known as Map of Core at Kings Park, number 1157, as follows. This table shall be shown on the final map to be filed in the office of the Suffolk County Clerk. A fee of $3,000 is required for these variances. Be resolved that the Chairman of the Planning Board be authorized to sign the performance bond estimate from Map of Core at Kings Park, number 1157, in the amount of $23,775, and establishing an inspection fee of $1,902 and a cash deposit of $1,000. Therefore, the amount of the performance bond to be posted with the town shall be $22,775.
Now, when you, I'm sorry, when you said "as follows," you referencing the table of modifications that's in our memorandum on page three, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, can I make a suggestion for clarity purposes?
Go right ahead.
It seems that we have, what he just read is several resolutions together. For purposes of clarity, I would suggest that we call those as a whole the approval resolutions, and then there's one resolution that I think he's gonna read now for denial. We should call that the denial resolution.
Okay.
So that we can know what we're voting for.
Would you like to move these resolutions, which are part of what we refer to as the first resolution?
Well, I'd rather wait to let him read both, and then we'll.
You'd rather get both resolutions.
I think, I think that's what I would rather do, yeah. It's up to you, though. Because the second resolution's very short compared to what he just read.
Anybody have any suggestions, objections, or shall we proceed to reading of the second resolution?
Which will be called the denial resolution.
Denial resolution. All right, let's proceed. Keep on reading.
Right, exactly. So this is now the second resolution, which is called the denial resolution.
Yes. Be resolved that the Planning Board of the Town of Smithtown hereby denies the request of Robert Scalfo for the final subdivision known as Map of Core at Kings Park, number 1157, for the following reasons. A, the subdivision does not conform to the minimum lot frontage requirement for the R-15 zoning district. B, the granting of the lot frontage variances would increase the maximum density requirement in the R-15 zoning district and therefore is not approvable under Section 322-30.4A. And C, the granting of lot frontage variances would not achieve any of the objectives identified in Section 322-30.4A4.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, before you vote, I'd like to make a comment. If you vote on the resolution as read, you are in effect having a rehearing, because we already had the hearing on whether this Board should grant or deny the subdivision. So the way I read the subdivision laws, you would need a unanimous vote to either grant or deny if you're talking about denying the subdivision approval in and of itself. That's why I said before, it would probably be better if you eliminated the subdivision grant or denial of the subdivision part of it, and just vote on, which all you need is a majority vote, on the SEACRA and on the bonding and all those issues.
Well, I'm gonna make a motion that may, may or may not do what you're suggesting when you're done, and everybody else is done.
I couldn't hear that.
So I'm gonna make a motion that may or may not be similar to what you're suggesting.
Okay.
So is it time for a motion?
Go right ahead.
The SEACRA should be by a separate motion, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I move that we adopt the portions of the approval resolutions pertaining to SEACRA only at this time.
So we have a second?
Second.
There's a second.
Second.
A second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed. Three, two. You're, oh, he was aye, then he's opposed. Okay. Now, without the SEACRA being opposed, being approved, then we can't really vote on the rest of it.
That's correct.
Do you agree with that?
Yes.
Okay, that makes the rest of it academic. Because my motion would have been, just so the record could be clear, to supplement the original decision by picking up where we left off and just, because the SEACRA has to be done separately, and then having another motion now to have the rest of the approval. But since the SEACRA didn't carry, I don't think we can do the rest of it.
And I know what's going on here. It's a second bite at the apple, and that's not right.
So right now, there's a resolution that was approved, and the SEACRA has been denied. The resolution for SEACRA has been denied. And I'm not gonna make a motion to approve the rest of it, because it would be academic, because we couldn't do it without the SEACRA being approved.
That's understood.
Okay. That's what I would have done.
Okay.
So I'm not, I have no further motion.
All right, next item on the agenda, item number 11.
Next item, number 11, telecommunications application, number 2015-03 SMA, SMSA Limited Partnership Verizon 527 Townline Road-Hop Hog. One, reason for report. The Planning Board will conduct a public hearing on February 3rd, 2016, to consider the above referenced application for a special exception for a personal wireless service facility pursuant to Chapters 242 and 322-30.3B of the Smithtown Town Code. Two, the applicant, SMSA Limited Partnership, doing business as Verizon Wireless, care of Amato Law Group, PLLC 666 Old County Road, Old Country Road, Suite 901, Garden City, New York, 11530. Three, the site. The site is a rectangular-shaped parcel developed with a three-story office building and a related parking located at 527 Townline Road-Hop Hog. The building currently has two wireless facilities allocated on the roof. Four, zoning and land use. The site is MB Office Building. To the north is NB CB Shopping Center. To the south is the Town of Islip. To the east is NB Office Building. To the west is NB Bowling Alley, retail stores, and single-family residences. Five, staff report pursuant to Chapter 242 of the Town Code. This proposal requires an application to the Planning Board for a special exception for a Tier 2 telecommunications facility. However, recent federal legislation and directives under Chapter 6409 of Middle Class Tax Relief and Job Creation Act of 2012, TRA codified at 28 U.S.C., Chapter 1455, and Report and Order Number 14-153 clarifying the Act advised that a streamlined process should be employed. TRA Section 6409 sets forth that state or local government may not deny and shall approve, emphasis added, any eligible facilities request for modification of an eligible support structure that does not substantially change the physical dimensions of such structure. More specifically, Section 6409 of the TRA provides as follow. A, facility modifications. One, in general, notwithstanding Section 704 of the Telecommunications Act of 1996, Public Law 104-104, or any other provision of the law, a state or local government may not deny and shall approve any eligible facilities request for a modification of an existing wireless tower or base station that does not substantially change the physical dimensions of such tower or base station. Two, eligible facilities request. For the purposes of this subsection, the term eligible facilities request means any request for the modification of an existing wireless tower or base station that involves A, allocation of new transmission equipment, B, removal of transmission equipment, or C, replacement of transmission equipment. Further pursuant to the TRA order, when an applicant asserts in writing that a request for a modification is covered by this section, a state or local government may require the application to provide documentation or information only to the extent reasonably related to determining whether the request meets the requirements of this section. A state or local government may not require an applicant to submit any other documentation, including but not limited to documentation intended to illustrate need for the wireless facility. This application meets TRA standards for an application that must be reviewed in a streamlined process, and that must be approved by the municipality because the site is an existing base station, rooftop facility with an existing wireless facility. The proposed additional facility will not increase the height of the facility by 10% or by 10 feet, and the proposal does not substantially change the physical dimensions of the base station. Recommended decision. The Planning Department acknowledges that this application is not subject to review under Chapter 242 of the Town Code and recommends approval of this application as it meets the standards for approval of proposed changes to an existing facility under Chapter 6409 of the Middle Class Tax Relief and Job Creation Act of 2012. The Board must await a SEACRA determination from the Department of Environment and Waterways before taking any action to approve this petition.
Okay. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Denise Vista with Amato Law Group. Do you want the mic? Sure. Denise Vista, Amato Law Group, 666 Old Country Road, Garden City, New York, 11530. Here tonight on behalf of the applicant, New York SMSA Limited Partnership, doing business as Verizon Wireless.
Okay, you've heard the recommendation of the Planning Department, and do you concur or disagree in any way?
We do, but if you, would you like me to hand up the affidavit of posting and mailing?
Yeah, I think so. Think so. Good idea, good idea. Right, it's all on tape now.
You'll have to save those tapes.
Yes.
Yes, we agree with the recommendation. Obviously, under federal law, you're required to approve the application. Did you have any questions regarding the bills? If so, I have our engineer, Dan Filasco, here tonight.
You're adding to an existing facility, then?
There are two existing carriers, AT&amp;T and T-Mobile, and we are adding Verizon Wireless facility, yes.
Well, our memo says that we can't approve it yet because we have to wait for our Department of Environment and Waterways to give us a memo from them.
Yes, which.
Which we don't have, I don't think. Right?
Do we have any idea of when such a memo may be forthcoming?
Yes. I spoke with the Department of Environment and Waterways earlier today. Their concern was they wanted to ensure that there was, that they listened to any public comment that was at the meeting, given that there appears to be. Given that there appears to be none, they will be preparing a proposed resolution within the next few days.
All right.
So it can, it should be able to be adjourned to the next meeting if that's possible.
Upon the conclusion of your presentation, I'll ask if there are any public comments, and we'll take it from there.
Sure, I just wanted to comment on the SECA process.
Okay.
This has been happening on other applications that we have where we have to come back twice, essentially, because of the way that the town conducts the SECA process. With all due respect, I mean, we've never encountered this with any other municipalities where we've had to come back twice for an application...
Wouldn't make any sense to me, either.
I will speak with the Director of Department of Environment and Waterways and find out, because this is, as long as I've been on the board for two years, I've seen this situation arise on several occasions.
Yes.
I think it's unwarranted, and I've expressed that previously, but I will find out, and I regret you having to come back upon us adjourning this.
Yes, and especially under the federal law, you're supposed to review and approve the application within sixty days, and we're already beyond the sixty days, which means we're going to be, and further beyond the sixty days. So I just wanted to make that note on the record that perhaps there could be more streamlined process with respect to the SECA review.
Well, that's not anything that we could take care of at this meeting, but I think the wheels have been put in motion, maybe perhaps there's something to be done about it. But I was even going to say, you could call before to know whether there's going to be, you know, everything is in before you come down, and if not, you can request in a German. However, based upon what they said, they, the DEW is waiting for any public comment, so it's kind of like the chicken and the egg.
Exactly.
You have to be here for the public comment, and then after the public comment, then they give us the memo, then you have to come back.
Exactly.
So I think that maybe someone might ask them whether they can alter that.
Okay.
Okay.
Again, our regrets. Would we like to table this till the next meeting? What, your schedule?
I guess the next available date would be best, provided that the SECA will be available.
February seventeenth. February seventeenth is our next meeting.
And do you anticipate that the SECA will be completed at that time?
Yes.
Okay.
So it would have to be adjourned to that date, then?
Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn to February seventeenth?
In the matter of the special exception petition, number TC 2015-03, SMSA Limited Partnership, doing business as Verizon Wireless, I move that we adjourn this matter to the February seventeenth, 2016, planning board meeting while we await a SECA determination.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. It's adjourned to February seventeenth.
Thank you very much. Have a nice evening.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is a performance bond, now item number twelve, 1039, Garden Gate at St. James, and an accompanying companion resolution, which is requesting the reduction of the performance bond.
The applicant is before us for two matters, the first being a performance bond reduction and the second being a performance bond extension. The request for a performance bond reduction to the planning board was first heard at the December sixteenth, 2015, meeting. It was adjourned for further review as the applicant believed the recommended performance bond reduction of forty thousand six hundred fifty-four dollars was significantly lower than anticipated. As they follow up to the meeting, the applicant submitted a letter describing the work that had been completed, and we forwarded it to the engineering and highway departments for review. The engineering department responded and is not in favor of reducing the bond any further. They were amendable in reducing it initially for the drainage within the subdivision that was installed by the previous builder. However, the planning, engineering, and highway departments agree that it would defeat the purpose of the performance bond to continually reduce it as work is done. Therefore, our recommendation that the bond be reduced by forty thousand six hundred fifty-four dollars remains the same. The applicant is also requesting a retroactive extension of the performance bond for a two-year period to expire in December seventeenth, 2017. The final map of Garden Gate at St. James, number 1039, was approved by the planning board as an eight-lot subdivision on March second, 2005. The town board accepted a letter of credit in lieu of a performance bond in 2006. The bond went into default and was purchased by the applicant. The applicant posted cash in lieu of a performance bond in the amount of two hundred twelve thousand seven hundred twenty-five dollars. The town board accepted the cash in lieu of a performance bond on December seventeenth, 2013. The engineering, highway, and planning departments have no objection to the performance bond extension request. The planning department offers the following recommended resolutions for the board's consideration. Be it resolved that the planning board hereby approves the request of William Dollard for a performance bond reduction by a total of forty thousand six hundred fifty-four dollars within the subdivision known as Garden Gate at St. James, number 1039, and be it resolved that the planning board hereby approves the request of William Dollard for a retroactive extension of the performance bond for Garden Gate at St. James, number 1039, for a period of two years, so as to expire on December seventeenth, 2017.
Good evening.
Would you like to post them?
Yes.
Yes.
Have you heard the recommendation of the planning department? Please state your name for the record.
William Dollard, 13 Cherry Court, East of Torket, New York, 11733. I'm sorry?
D.O.L.L.A.O.D. Have you any comments?
Yeah. It was a very tricky situation, this bond, and the letter of credit, because I worked closely with the town attorney with this, and People's Bank was, you know, they expired their letter of credit, and I worked closely with the planning board, and I posted the two hundred and twelve thousand dollars, not because I couldn't get a bond, because it had to be done in a two-week period. So I posted the money, no problem, to avoid insurance reasons for everybody across the board. And when I negotiated this deal with the bank, Fred from the town attorney's office, I don't know his last name, assured me that I'd get back a hundred and twenty thousand of this bond, negotiated upfront before I posted this money. Now, I put the lift in, I put the streetlights in, I worked with the engineering department to review all the drainage that was installed, and it was installed properly and signed off, and I don't know where they get the figure for forty thousand, I was here the month prior, and this, only left is the top lift and some plantings. And at this point, I guess I have no argument, because it's the second time in a row for me the same amount of money, but it's not what they agreed upon. So I don't even know what my options are at this point, I guess I just have to live with it. Is that where I'm at at this point?
Well, we can't really give you advice on what to do. I think maybe you might want to speak to an attorney or somebody else who's been through it.
I build developments all over Suffolk County.
You really can't tell them what to do.
I build them everywhere, but...
The only thing I can tell you, I can tell you is that if you think that you should be entitled to more...
Yeah.
The only thing that we could do is adjourn it and give you an opportunity to speak to whoever is making the decision that you're getting back forty thousand and try to convince them as to more.
Well, I appreciate that, but it didn't work.
That's all we could do.
The inner offices itself did not really work well together, and there, some offices say, Bill, you're right, and some offices say, Bill, you're not, so at this point, I guess I'll just accept what you're giving me. That's the best I can do, I guess.
You know, we rely on our expert...
I understand.
And you rely on, you know, whoever you seek counsel with.
It's fine, I guess I'll accept what you're offering me, that's fine.
Yeah, the only alternative would be to have your people contact our people and see if they could work it out. Other than that, you're going to get back what they're recommending now.
Right, that's fine, that's fine. I guess I'm going to accept what you're offering me.
No one else wishes to be heard on this matter? Any questions from the board, or do we have a motion?
In the matter of Garden Gate at St. James, number 1039, I move that we adopt the resolutions as read in accordance with the recommendation of the planning department.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the next is a waiver request for Bel Air Estates, Smithtown, item number fourteen.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Michelangelo Matera of Matera Law Firm. I represent, your last name's spelled Matera, M-A-T-E-R-A, on behalf of A. Peroni and Sons, Inc., doing business as Peroni Homes. Do have the affidavit of posting.
The applicant requests to waive their requirement to install approximately one thousand one hundred seventeen feet of sidewalk along Bel Air Court, aka Peroni Court, and waive the conditions F and G of the final subdivision approval for Lot Five. The applicant received conditional final approval for this five-lot subdivision from the planning board on August third, 2005. In 2012, the town board declared the performance bond for Bel Air Estates, number 1046, in default. However, rather than initiate default proceedings, the town attorney's office was requested to work with the developer to complete the outstanding items. In January 2014, the town attorney informed this department that the subdivision was complete. The applicant is attempting to finalize the subdivision by requesting waivers for three outstanding items. One, the installation of one thousand one hundred seventeen linear feet of required sidewalks. Two, submission of the site plan for Lot Five as required by Condition F, which reads, "Prior to the time of sub-submission of an application for a building permit for a particular lot, the subdivision shall have its engineer or surveyor submit an individual site plan of that lot, which is in substantial agreement with the intent of the approved regrading plan." And three, preparation of an as-built survey for Lot Five, as required by Condition G, which reads, "At such time as the subdivision has completed the foundation and rough grading for a particular lot, he shall have his engineer or surveyor make an as-built survey of the foundation grade, garage slab grade, and the grades immediately around the foundation." The engineering and highway departments have no objection to the waiver requests. The planning department has no objection to requests to waive the sidewalks, because Peroni Court is a short residential access street that serves only three houses. Additionally, there are no sidewalks on the west side of Moorewood Drive. The planning department does not object to waiving Conditions F and G, because these requirements are part of the standard procedure for obtaining a building permit. The planning department offers the following resolution for the board's consideration. Be it resolved that the planning board hereby approves the request to waive approximately one thousand one hundred seventeen feet of sidewalk along Bel Air Court, aka Peroni Court, within the subdivision known as Bel Air Estates, number 1046, and be it further resolved that the planning board waives final Conditions F and G for Lot Number Five within the subdivision known as Bel Air Estates, number 1046.
We do concur. The final lot is actually still for sale, as indicated. It's going to be part of the building permit application process anyway, so we do ask that you grant the request.
Okay, anyone present who wishes to be heard on this matter? Any questions from any members of the board? No? We have a motion to approve?
In the matter of Bel Air Estates, number 1046, move that we adopt the resolution as read in accordance with the recommendation of the planning department.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The resolutions are carried.
Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you, you too.
We have one other matter before us. The board is in receipt of a memo from Allison Murray, our environmental planner, regarding public notice requirements for cases adjourned to a specific date. Do you have any questions or comments for the board? So why did this precipitate? You've obviously received inquiries.
We had received inquiries, one of which being from Mr. Tramarko...
Okay.
About the last application for Map of Core, but there had been other inquiries in the past as to whether...
Okay, so you're looking for a formalized decision of the board to give them a response?
That's right, I mean, just to know if the board's in agreement with the planning department's opinion.
Yeah, I think we've done this in the past, haven't we?
It's been done this way for a long time. Basically, if the hearing is just adjourned, it's the same hearing, it's just continuing on a different date, which to my knowledge and my understanding of the law, would relieve the applicant of the obligation to repost it. Maybe for clarity's purposes, it might be good to state on the record that the hearing is also kept open, if that's what we want to do, because then we really know that it was advertised, and, you know, the public can find out about it by coming here or checking with you, because it's a date certain. So we've been doing it that way since I've been on the board, which is probably eleven years now.
That was our understanding as well.
Okay. Any other opinions from the board members? So I would say you have a unanimous, do you want to do a resolution, or...
No, that's fine, thank you.
We're fine. Just to make sure we're all on the same page.
Yes.
And the adoption of minutes?
The adoption of the minutes? Do we have a motion to approve the minutes of January sixth, 2016, and January twentieth, 2016? Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion.
Motion to approve the minutes of January sixth, 2016, and January twentieth, 2016.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. There being no further business, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We stand adjourned, all right.